Commission is now called to order at 6:00 P. M. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for rigid stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor? Commissioner Adaway?
Here.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Here.
And Mayor Hanley?
Here. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Protem Schlegel?
I would make a motion to excuse Commissioner Mayor for personal reasons.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six to zero. We have an agenda in front of us. Commissioners, do I have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Gottlieb?
We'll approve the agenda as is.
A second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six to zero. I have no announcements tonight, which brings us to public comment. This is the first public comment portion of the evening. When addressing the commission, please state your name and physical address. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
O'Barb outside, thirteen twenty-four North Front Street. I urge you to think very carefully before approving the redirection of brownfield funds toward the parking structure at the former hospital site. This is about more than parking. It's about trust, accountability, and fairness to the Marquette residents. Let's remember the context. The project was awarded to the Verdia Group led by Robert Mahaney, longtime developer and former NMU Board of Trustee member. His company was the only bidder for the site. That kind of inside dynamic already raised questions. Then we look at his record elsewhere. Just this summer, the Detroit News ran a major piece exposing Mahaney project with dollars earmarked for workforce housing. This project produced expensive upscale apartments that call for well over two grand a month in rent, hardly attainable for to most workers. It's not an accusation, it's a documented fact. It shows a pattern, promising a public health benefit or a public benefit while extracting maximum private profit. Now here in Marquette, we're told structured parking is suddenly essential to increase residential density. Why wasn't that in the plan from the start? Shouldn't that have been part of the equation when promising much-needed housing options? Why should demolition and cleanup dollars now be repurposed to bail out a developer's financing plan? And why should residents simply take it on faith that this shift is in their best interest? Meanwhile, while we debate parking garages and future density, families on Magnetic Street are paying the price right now. The condition of College Avenue now beyond repair due to the strain of heavy equipment required for demolition remains closed. There's no interim solution, no timeline, no guarantee it will ever reopen. And in the meantime, traffic has been forced onto Magnetic Street, creating daily congestion, speeding, and real safety risks for children and pedestrians. The developer isn't bearing that burden, the residents are. So I urge you, do not approve this redirection of brownfield funds without conditions. At minimum, require the reopening of College Avenue in the interim. Attach a clear enforceable timeline. A fill and repaving of those four to five blocks on College funded by the developer would provide some reassurance and help build some public trust. And if the developer insists the road must remain closed and requires specific mitigation measures for Magnetic Street residents, traffic calming, safety, infrastructure, and public reporting. This project may take years, even decades, to build out. The city has no recourse unless you build accountability in it now. Brownfield, oh shoot, brownfield funds are public tools meant to remediate, rehabilitate, enable productive use in public interest. Diverting them away from demolition site cleanup and infrastructure toward parking, which benefits private viability, should only happen if the public return is front and center. Without enforceable incentives, the city gives leverage away. Marquette deserves better. Please protect residents, protect our public funds, and require real enforceable commitments. Table this now, ensure citizens benefit from the project as much as from the developers, as much as the developers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else for public comment?
Hi, I'm Iris Katers, fifteenth Specker Circle, Marquette. And I am wife and widow of Ron Katers, fifteenth Specker Circle. He was fifteenth Specker Circle. And I'm here to talk about two proposed monuments at Harlow Park. And they will look like a podium, so they fit in whenever the veterans have a great event. They're all made of marble, costing the city, the taxpayers, zero amount of money, including upkeep in perpetuity. And my husband wanted to remember the people who went to war for two hundred fifty years. And so as he lay dying, he gave me all these charges, things to do. And he said, do people know why we have been sacrificing our lives, our precious families for two hundred fifty years? Do they know what the Declaration of Independence says or the Constitution? And you know, if you don't study it all the time, you forget what's in there. And that also includes the twenty-seven amendments. So he tried to be a soldier. He was six foot seven and a half, and they wouldn't take him. And so I think all his life, he kind of thought about that. How can I help the people who did go to war, who did lose their lives or their limbs? And so as a teacher, I was a teacher for thirty-nine years. Whenever November eleventh came around, nine eleven, the Fourth of July Flag Day, he would make sure that I had extra flags to teach my students. And he felt that having something in our Harlow Park, not by the POW, not by the MIA Cube, but more by the fountain where they always drag down the podium anyway, that this would help everybody in the U.P., especially our precious children. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Iris. Do I have anyone else for public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will close our first public comment. This brings us to our first presentation of the evening. The Senior Services Update by Senior Services Manager Mo McFadden.
Can everyone, oh, I'm not used to this. Okay, everyone can hear me. Great, wonderful. Alrighty, I think we're just getting this started here. Bring this up. Perfect, great. Hi, everybody. My name is Maureen McFadden. I'm the Senior Services Manager for the City of Marquette. And I thank you for welcoming me today, commissioners, to present our annual report of the Marquette Senior Center and our Aging Services. I would like to say one thing, sixty years and counting, our Senior Center is officially a senior. It's pretty exciting. Our purpose is to help older adults in the City of Marquette, Marquette Township, Chocolay Township, and Powell Township live independent with the maximum dignity possible in an environment of their choosing. I think sometimes people hear social worker, or they hear Senior Center, and they say, oh, you're going to put me in a nursing home. Well, not if you don't want to go there. That's not our intent, is our intent is to help make sure that you can live the best quality of life possible while you're aging, because that's the one thing we all have in common, is that we're all aging. We are one of three divisions in the Community Services Department, along with Arts and Culture and Parks and Recreation. We serve Marquette City, Marquette Township, Chocolay Township, and Powell Township at no cost to our clients, primarily funded through the Marquette County Senior Millage and the City of Marquette Senior Millage. Anybody over the age of sixty is eligible to access our social work services, along with all the robust programming. And then anyone over the age of fifty is actually able to attend our programming as well. So it's pretty expansive of the individuals in our community that are eligible for our services. This is our staff. So myself, and then we have three full-time social workers. We have one part-time social worker. We have our Arts and Senior Services Coordinator that we thankfully share with Arts and Culture. And then we have our part-time administrative assistant. One thing I would like to note here is back when you see Lisa Belko started in her role as the Social Work Coordinator about twenty years ago, her caseload for case management, that's just one of the essential services we provide, was sixty-two people for our in-home services program. So that's individuals that need extra help at home to stay independent. Sixty-two. As of right now, we have two hundred people on that program and fifty people on our wait list. The only thing that has changed in staffing in the last twenty years with that social work need is the addition of one part-time social worker. So I'd kind of like that to sit in with everybody. We wouldn't be here without this amazing staff. They don't get to talk about themselves, so that's what I'm here to do. And I don't know what our community would do without them. In addition to the individuals not pictured here are nine direct care aides that I spoke of. We currently have one opening, if anyone's interested. But those individuals also don't get the recognition they always deserve. And these are individuals that go into the home every other week for up to two hours each time to help our clients with laundry, grocery shopping, personal care, cleaning, anything to keep them safe and independent. What matters most to seniors in the United States? Well, health is one of them, wealth, and we see that here, especially in Marquette County, as we are considered kind of an Alice population up here in the U.P. But you know, a lot of our seniors, they can't necessarily just create more income, right? So things like housing, things like food and nutrition, when the prices of those factors go up, it really, really affects their financial security, so we help them manage that. Community is huge. Seventy-one percent of seniors say that that is their first and top priority. I'm very proud to say that I think here in the city, we create a really, really wonderful community. And then outlook. So age is a state of mind. We've really been working nationally as providers to really grasp onto that quote. It really is a state of mind. Like I mentioned earlier, we're all aging. If we can kind of reframe that conversation, I think that all of us would be a lot happier. Programming, so we have some pretty robust programming. We have our fitness classes. We have three levels of fitness classes that we provide, along with falls and arthritis prevention courses, along with community health education courses. So for example, this next year, we are looking at starting a diabetes prevention education course. So different things like that. We partner with different community partners to do that, different fitness instructors, and very robust programming for our fitness and health and education. And of course, pickleball, you know, that's in there. And then we have our senior arts programming. We are able to partner with the Arts and Culture Division, especially because we're in the same department, where we're able to offer a really robust senior theater program, a senior dance program, and a visual senior arts program with different rotating professional instructors. We have our recreational and our other social programs, so Congregate Meal, which we'll talk about a little later today, Silver Sampler, which is a nationally recognized program, and our picnic in the parks, which is that picture right there. That's not everything we do. That was just me summarizing it. But I do want to highlight the statistics you see above. One thousand one hundred and twenty-eight unique individuals have accessed our building. That does not include tax assistance, which is held off-site at Lakeview Arena. That does not include Silver Sampler, which is held off-site. That does not include our senior arts programs, which were held off-site. So that is just the people that have checked in just for programming, not even social work services. From January of two thousand twenty-five through August of two thousand twenty-five, we have had over fifteen thousand check-ins in our building. Just think about that, down there, fifteen thousand check-ins. It's pretty remarkable. So, super proud of that. Our social work services are the core of what we do. Those millages that we spoke of earlier, that is what provides most of our funding. And those millage dollars primarily legally have to be spent on what we call priority services, which is what you see here. So we actually only get thirty percent of our budget from, for programming from the millages. We have to make up our programming budget through other sources. But our social work services are the priority of what we do. So we have the case coordination and support, the in-home services, which I talked about earlier, outreach, financial management, and information and assistance. I do want to note that for financial management, one of the primary services we provide is Medicare and Medicaid Assistance Program Counseling. Open enrollment is right around the corner. It's October fifteenth through December seventh. And during that time, the social workers, the rest of their job doesn't stop. Instead, now we add a whole nother service onto their plates. Last year alone, during a five-week timeframe, the counselors we have at the Senior Center saw two hundred and eighty-eight clients and saved our clients over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in health insurance costs had they not come to see us for a review. So that's pretty fantastic. Also, you will hear in the news shortly, there is also an increase of Medicare fraud locally. And part of the reason that was caught was because our three social workers caught it and reported it to the state and federal government. And now we're going to be able to do a lot of education and prevention for individuals. We already talked about this a little bit, our funding sources, the millages. We also have the grants that we apply for, and then of course, the generous donations from our clients. So this, the statistics down below here are just from the Marquette County Millage, okay? And technically city as well. And this is for, as of what we have this far for this year, if that makes sense. So this isn't finished, but it breaks it down by service area, by service, by number of clients in that service area, and then the amount of hours worked for that individual service and client. So I know that's a lot to digest, but that is how we report everything. I always just, I threw this in last year, but this is census data. So if you look in the lower left-hand corner, there's the Marquette Senior Center. That is just for individuals over sixty, I would like to note. And I would also like to note that since the last census, our population of older adults over sixty has increased by sixteen percent. And then our success stories for the year. We were a recipient of the Superior Health Foundation Falls Prevention and Asahi Grant, and that is using the evidence-based Asahi Nordic Program for Falls Prevention. That is to enhance our Finnish culture we have here in the U.P. So we were able to utilize that to get new instructors trained, be able to increase the amount of classes we offer in our service areas, and increase our participation. So that was great. We were invited to speak at the National Council on Aging Conference for the second year in a row. And in addition to that, we were also selected to present at the Michigan Association of Senior Centers Conference this year. We were also appointed to the Michigan Association of Senior Centers Board of Directors, which has allowed us to do a lot more advocacy work for our rural area. We partnered with NMU to take on social work interns for like the first time ever. So we had two last year, and we actually have two sitting with us today. We expanded our AARP tax program. So that was in partnership with Parks and Recreation and Lakeview Arena. We were able to take our tax program of about four appointments per hour and expand it to eight appointments per hour. And the space at Lakeview Arena allowed us to have accessibility. We had an issue with our tax program before with some of our accessibility, which is why we could only host for an hour. But expanding to Lakeview allowed us to just completely expand. But expanding to Lakeview allowed us to just completely expand that program. And with that program, we helped over 500 people with free tax assistance in our area alone. We were able to partner with the amazing volunteers at AARP who truly are just amazing people to offer taxes two days a week for free. We moved it to Lakeview, which allowed us to increase our capacity. And they believe that between tax filing fees and the returns that clients received, we were able to save clients over a quarter million dollars. We also launched our My Senior Center database system, which has approved staff efficiency. We were able to partner with Marquette County Aging Services to apply for the funds for that system. It has also allowed us to track data more accurately and realize how many people were actually serving, and therefore apply for new funding. In addition, we launched five new programs this year. We have partnered with the Secretary of State Office to offer Secretary of State appointments at our senior center. We have also done our ukulele class, which we launched this year, which is actually very popular. We have done Smiles on Wheels to help fulfill the kind of dental resource desert that we have here in the U.P. And we did, I know, I'm trying to remember them. I should have written them down. We did two more programs that I can't think of off the top of my head, but a lot of exciting things this year. So that's it. Thank you for your support. Please follow us on Facebook if you do not already, and I would love to open it up for any questions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments?
Comments?
Commissioner Davis?
It's...
It's a lot.
You're pretty overwhelming and very impressive, Mo. It sounds like you do so much with so little, and I think all the statistics you provided are, I'm just really impressed that you keep track of all of that. The fact that you're, well, your national recognition. I mean, that's, that's really cool. And I know that you traveled to, to the national organization a couple times, so thank you and got, and got that award. You know, are these your interns?
These are, these are interns. It was part of their learning agreement. I told them they had to come.
I just have to say, you're very fortunate to be working at our senior center at this point in your life, so. I think I'm just gonna just let it go with that, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. It's clear that, you know, we're, thank you for being here. It's clear that, you know, you've touched a lot of lives. And so I guess one of the questions that I have is that, what is the capacity? You're already at touching 1,200 people that come into the building, not including elsewhere. What is the capacity to grow? I mean, certainly there's other seniors in the community that potentially need help or that may not be aware of the services that are being offered, or maybe just learning about it, you know, right now. What is the capacity to, you know, serve additional individuals?
Sure. So with my time at the national conventions, and I have spent the last seven years here at the city, using every opportunity I can to research that exact question. Respectfully, it's the space. We do not have enough parking. We are not meeting standards for accessibility in regards to what a typical senior center would provide. And as, as it stands, Marquette County especially is aging. Most of our population is leaning towards the area where they could or maybe will access our services, and that trend is just going to continue. So there's definitely people out there we can reach. And what I've seen in the last seven years is that I believe if we had a space that could accommodate that growth, we would be able to serve people better, and our community would have better continuum of care.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Otway and then Potem Schlegel.
Mo, thank you. Once again, you bring everything to the table beautifully. I always look forward to your presentation, just because you have such a passion for what you do. People at our senior center are very lucky to have you. You've kind of outlined everything here, and like many of the problems we have in the city, biggest issue you guys have is clearly financial. Knowing that, where are the opportunities that you see moving forward to maybe raise some finances? Are there opportunities, you know, obviously, you guys are helping more than just the city of Marquette's citizens. Are there opportunities to garner funds from other communities, more so from the county fundraising? What, what do you see in the future?
So as you probably know more than I do, the city's hands are tied in regards to what we can and cannot do in regards to fundraising, because we are a municipal entity. That being said, I just want to give a big thank you out to some of the other city departments that have helped us look into what our options are. So we're talking finance, treasury, the city manager's office, Suzanne, Rachel, Kyle. I mean, everybody has been so helpful. So I am optimistic with what we have found recently in the last year, that there might be, I don't want to say loopholes, because no one likes that word, but there might be opportunities for us to tap into some funding sources we weren't able to before. So that's fantastic. It's definitely on my radar. In addition, I'm now making these regular presentations to our outlying communities so we can educate them on what their residents are receiving, so they can see the value in that. Those communities do technically provide us with funding already through the Marquette County Millage. So it's kind of one of those situations where if I'm going to make that ask, I want to make sure they understand the deliverable. In addition to that, I'm looking at state and federal grants in regards to capacity building. But it's tricky. It's, it's really tricky. We have made jumps so far in regards to approving efficiencies within our department to be able to take the funds we have and be able to reallocate them to what's needed. And we have made organizational structure changes to help bring in more revenue through donations. But we, we need to do more. And so that's what I'm looking into.
Thank you. Thanks, Mo. Great presentation once more. Always, always look forward to it, as everybody else does. I think the, the important part that I want to bring up tonight is that when we go, this past week or a couple weeks ago, we went down to the MML, the Michigan Municipal League. And when we go down there, we interact with a lot of other communities. And it is, it blows my mind when I get a chance to meet with these other people, that how many of them seek us out as Marquette commissioners or members of our polity here. And they speak so highly of our community, and it's because of these types of programs that they're seeing, whether they're, people are bringing back examples from, from another convention that they went at and you spoke at, or maybe it's an arts and culture thing, or maybe it's a parks and rec thing. But all of these departments that work so well together, that make us who we are, is truly the crooks of, you know, it, it makes me so proud to sit there and wear that little badge and says Marquette. And I'm just one of, you know, seven here that is able to be honored to, to represent everything that this community stands for. And that's, that's what, you know, when I, when I see these types of presentations, that I want you to know that it's far-reaching. It's a lot further than what you may see and how proud we are to be part of that process too. So thank you for allowing that.
Thank you.
Okay, I will say something. I am so thankful for all that you do. I really enjoyed seeing you at the Lakes Superior Shores Half Marathon. There was also a five-mile walk. And there was a group of older citizens that went with you and did it, and that was not an easy walk.
Yeah, I was really sore after.
You were hiking in the mountains. Like, it was great. And it's wonderful to see all the different things you do. You don't limit anyone. You allow them to put their own limits on themselves. And other than that, you push them to do everything, which I love as part of our, as part of our stuff. I did have someone reach out to me, and I'd like to read what they had said. They had said they, they want to share how much they appreciate the staff of the senior center, Barb's volunteer, the programs, men's group lunch, and many, many more, and that the senior center, and that their hope is that you could get improved accessibility, as they have slipped in this, on the sidewalk from the parking lot more than once. But other than that, they said that they want the city to continue to support you. So I wanted to share that, because it's always nice to have people reach out and say good things about your programming. So thank you so much for all you did and the wonderful and informative presentation.
Thank you so much.
I can actually probably have you stay right there for our second thing, if you'd like. Our second presentation of the night is going to be our senior services recognition of Barb Sosorni. I'm going to come over to you. All right. Hi, Barb. Come on in.
She didn't have a choice. I told her to.
Good, it's always better that way. I would like to say that we are deeply grateful for Barb Sosorni, who has been given her time, energy, and support to the senior center every week since 2018. In addition to her service with other city departments, Barb has been, become an irreplaceable part of our senior center family. She is a true ambassador of our mission and our services, and her dedication and kindness shine through in everything that she does. We are so thankful for the lasting impact she continues to make in this community, and we are very happy to have her here. So thank you very much. I know I said something. Where am I, Sean? It's my first use of your chat. Barb, did you want to say anything? You don't have to. But if you do say it into here, so people online can see you.
One of my, in my retirement years, my advice has always been, do things that feed your heart and soul. Otherwise, when you do something for nothing, you don't want to go, don't do it. And I started at the senior center doing taxes 10 years ago, thinking what I, could I do to really help people? Since all I knew, I was the lunch lady before I became the tax lady. But I've done it for 10 years, and to see the smiles, the thankfulness, the tears at times. I had one old codger give me a hug and tears because I saved him money he didn't know what to do with, not to do with, that he knew that he'd never gotten before. And that is what feeds my soul, and I am happy to do that. I look forward to February and March every year. And people think we're all crazy for doing taxes and liking it, but I am a great believer in the tax program that comes out of the senior center. Okay.
Commissioners, do we have any comments before I move on from this? Okay. This brings us to our third and final presentation of the evening, the Michigan AWWA Best Tasting Water Award. And I'd like to give Director of Public Works, Scott Kemenzi.
Hi. I just want to take a second to bring the award in to show everybody and take the opportunity to recognize staff that work so hard, day in and day out, to make sure that all our residents are getting clean and safe drinking water every day. And now we get to say they also have the best tasting water in the state of Michigan. So congratulations to all those involved and city representatives.
Over the head. City Manager Kovacs, I believe, has a toast for us?
You know what? I think that this actually does call for a toast. So if you don't mind, raise your glasses.
It's water, I swear.
To this great city of Marquette, where our lake is legendary, the people are proud, and now the water is officially the best tasting in all of Michigan. From the pristine depths of Lake Superior, our source lives up to its name. Pure, powerful, and unmatched. Here's to the cleanest sip, the clearest drop, and a dedicated team that keeps it flowing. May our taps never run dry, and may Marquette always quench the thirst for excellence. Cheers.
That is an awesome-looking award. I'm a pretty big fan of that.
I was actually amazed by somebody in public works, so.
Oh, that's even better.
Not for Marquette, but that's.
That's fantastic. Right in front of me for the whole meeting. Put it in front of Ryan. He doesn't want to be seen anywhere, right? Oh yeah, Cody's seat, perfect. No, I think we're good. I think we can. Oh goodness, thank you so much. That is a very cool-looking award.
Thank you.
All right. This now brings us to our public hearings for the evening. We have three public hearings tonight. The first is our Budget and General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2026. Deputy City Clerk, can you please read the background? I can't see her. Can't see you. Over the big chair.
The City Commission held the Budget Conference on August 7, 2025. Tonight, a public hearing is scheduled to receive public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. Following this input, the commission should consider any changes it wishes to make to the budget. Fiscal effect and adopted budget is required to expend government funds. Recommendation: Approve the attached resolution adopting fiscal year 2026 budget and general appropriations act. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Before I open this for public comment, I believe I'm going to give it to our city manager to give us a little more background on the budget.
You betcha. I do have just a quick presentation that we can go through, just to, to kind of highlight a few of these things that are familiar to the commission, but really are geared towards more to the public here to, to understand some of these. So just a quick highlight or a quick view of the timeline that we have. Really, these start back in, in January, February, with discussions and some of these assumptions and estimates that we come up with. Moving forward through, through the spring, working more internally with staff, and then going to an all-day budget conference with the City Commission, which was following actually some, some strategic planning sessions that we had as well, which leads us really towards right now, which is our public hearing. And after this public hearing, if the budget is adopted, then we go into the fiscal year starting October 1, and ongoing monitoring occurs and ongoing budget amendments, if necessary, occur as well. Just to highlight a couple of, of things here with revenue sources for the public to understand and to, to kind of see where we generate our revenue, and we compare it with some of our neighbors here, looking at Ohio, Indiana, Illinois, and Wisconsin. The state of Michigan has two real options for generating large sums of revenue or main revenue sources for municipalities, and that's property taxes and income taxes. Now, let me just remind everybody and be clear that we're not talking about an income tax here today. This is really just for some informational purposes for some of our, our other urban municipalities in Michigan and in Ohio and Indiana. We are quite limited to property taxes. It is our main revenue source within the general fund, and it covers a lot of our core services. Something that we hear a lot from the public is why can't we have a hotel tax? Hotel taxes are incredibly limited, or tourist tax are incredibly limited right now. And, and we see here that Kent County has one that is specifically generating funds for a purpose such as an arena or economic development project. There is obviously some other conversations that we have with the commission about lobbying for, for potential changes for that, but it is a little bit more complex in consideration for our tourism industry within, within our city. Just to look at our property tax rates in comparison to our municipalities, right now, where we stand, we are not the highest and we're not the lowest, which, which kind of tells us we're right there in that middle pack and is, is more of a balance. It's difficult to compare to our neighbors and to other municipalities, just because services are different, our makeup of our, our town is different, or our city is different than a township, and some other factors that come into play. So it's a little unfair to look at this, but I do know it's a common conversation if you pay attention to social media. So where we stand right now, the total mills levied across, you know, the board for, for not only just the city, but education, library, county, and rec millages are 38.5 within the city. We do have some downstate peers in here that are comparables quite often when we look at Port Huron and Mount Pleasant as well. This is just for, just for informational purposes and is subject to change during any elections. But please note that the city's property tax rate or millage rate is not increasing. Now, that's different than when your, your bill increases due to value changes. We don't, don't have enough time here to discuss that, but just keep in mind that what we are proposing today is no increases to our tax rate millage. Just in comparison, a little bit more of a visual here on what we're spending it on or what our property tax bills go towards, and we're looking, you know, really, the purple, hopefully if you can still tell the colors here, the purple, is looking at our city or township millages when we compare. Orange is education. We have green for library, and then blue for county, and then yellow, if you can see it, is recreation. What that means is, if you broke it down into a month for city services, you're talking about that funds your police department, that your state-of-the-art fire department with EMS services, our parks and rec and trails that we have across the city, including Prescott Isle Park, and some of that really publicly accessible, public lakefront access there. The best snow plowing in the area, if you ask me, with crews that are working around the clock during low storms. And then we do have community art events, engagement opportunities. We have Citizens Academy programs, Police Citizens Academy, and really active and available staff on call for you at any given moment. Capital improvements are included in that, and then we also have that safe and secure local elections with that expert staff that runs them and who may have been helping me prepare this presentation. So, when we look at $140, and I'm not trying to downplay, you know, that, but $140 gets you some of our best services that we have, and really, when we look at what our budget directives are and our budget goals for this year, it's really maintaining that public service at the highest level and investing in our assets, which are our people. And also, that includes some infrastructure, too. So, when we break it down like that, when we look at what we're getting for those services, that's quite a big bang for the buck. Another visual, this one you see everywhere, is just looking at what your dollar goes towards. In this case, $100 goes towards, but education is in there and city services, library in the county. So, as much as it is easy to look at this and kind of take a deep sigh on what you are paying for, it goes through quite a bit. That makes our community so vibrant. I have to talk about taxable value or taxable property in the city when we talk about budget because we are working up against some constraints here. The city of Marquette is incredibly unique in the sense that our property within the city, 50% of it is non-taxable, but yet we still serve it. And those non-taxable property includes some of our best and our most, you know, beloved nonprofits, our churches, our public universities, and other government-owned land, including our lakefront. So, when we look at what we have to accomplish and what we serve and where our largest revenue source is coming from, 50% of our land in the city. That is really unique for a lot of our municipalities. So, we are constrained by that, but, you know, those challenges turn into our biggest opportunities, and those are, a lot of those things are things that bring us a lot of value and joy in our community, make it so special. So, turning that into a positive. But also, when we talk about taxable property in the city, we also have 700 units of subsidized housing. 700 units in the city. That is well over 1,000 people as well that we have to serve, and those subsidized units of housing, which include some low-income and senior housing, that pays collectively over the year only about $53,000 a year in quote-unquote taxes or payment in lieu of taxes. So, for reference, if you look at a larger-scale apartment complex or rental units, which is 480 units, such as Tourville Apartments, which is one of our larger taxpayers, that's $280,000 a year to serve 480 units. So, in comparison, we do have to see what type of property we are in our city and who we are serving and how we can generate some of that revenue to cover the services for everybody. Also, payment and low tax arrangements that we do have that otherwise would have been taxable include enterprise things like enterprise funds or enterprise properties such as our water and wastewater plant, which generates a revenue but isn't taxable. So, they do pay into our payment and low taxes, otherwise they would be paying a tax. All right. Kind of running through our general fund revenues and expenditures, we can get into a lot of numbers, and I'm certainly happy to rattle off 26ths in some million dollars in there, but it's really a good visual here to look at what we talked about with our revenues, with a bulk of that coming from our property taxes. Our next largest revenue source is revenue sharing or state shared revenue, so sales tax revenue that comes in. And then we also have charging, charges for services and some other things like permits and whatnot. Charges for services generally cover the cost for providing that service and maybe a little bit more for admin if needed or if allowed, but generally, those are covering costs and not necessarily making us money or revenue for other purposes or general purposes. What do we do with that money when it comes into the general fund? We are spending a lot of it on public safety. It is costly to have a very safe city, but with that comes a lot of the licensing accreditation and our response to emergencies and planning. And then we have general government, which covers elections, City Manager's office, things like that that are more general in nature. Public Works is in there, and while that does look small, it doesn't mean that that's all the money that goes towards Public Works. Some of those are covered in other funds such as street funds and water and sewer funds. Same thing with recreation and culture. That is the general fund's contribution to recreation and culture, investment in that as well. Again, there are some other funds that cover some of those specific activities. And then, lastly, we have transfers out, which is that gray, gray little sliver or piece of pie. Transfers out cover a lot of the debt service. And so, just to put that into context, the general fund contributes close to $2.3 million of debt every year to pay for various projects that we have taken bonds out for. The other portion of that, which is over $1 million, goes towards public infrastructure or capital improvement projects that are coming up that are transferred out into our street funds. So, that transfers out kind of sliver is a little bit misleading, but that's close to 3.6 million. All right, a little bit more exciting stuff. Capital outlay. What does that really mean, capital outlay? So, in, over the previous years, we really, you know, had to scale back on some of our capital projects just because of our financial position, and we've taken a pause on bonding, which has really assisted with us catching up and really paying off a lot of those bonds to free up some of that general fund dollars. Capital outlay, when we have to make those decisions, we are really looking at a lot of things that we have listed here. So, I don't necessarily want to read most of this, but when we're looking at maintenance even, we're talking about hundreds of miles of water distribution systems, sanitary sewer systems, stormwater systems, and our road network. And so, there's a lot to balance. And while some people, you know, and I hear quite often, and I do it myself, I say, man, this road is so bad. Why are we doing this other road that is so much easier to drive on and smoother to drive on? But that has to do with the strategy that we take for a lot of our road projects. Just because it's the worst road doesn't mean it's the one that is best to get done right now because it's already bad. Let's preserve the roads that are in that milder condition or more fair condition that perhaps we can get five more years out of instead of a heftier project. So, that leads us really into this year and what we're talking about. We are looking at some simp projects, which is the street improvement maintenance projects, and we're looking at one, I believe, $1.4 million of street improvement projects, which are more of the resurfacing, which gets us a little bit further along until we can do some more significant stuff. It also includes some utility work in there as well. But just a quick glance at some of the proposed projects in here, it equates to about two and some change miles of roads here that we're improving, and it costs $1.4 million to do those. Don't necessarily get too excited. We do have to consider what, when bids go out, how much we can do, but this is hopefully what we can accomplish with our $1.4 million. We are looking to utilize fund balance for this at this moment while we evaluate the conditions for bonding, which is something that we have to be incredibly cautious on and strategic on, just because our bond rating is so good right now and going out for more debt just as on debt payments for a longer period of time. We have a very healthy fund balance in the general fund, which is allowed to be used for these types of projects and is actually recommended in some of the conditions we have right now while leaving some stress on our debt payments. We do have component units in there with the library, the DDA, and the Brownfield Authority. I'm just touching on those because those are confirmed by the City Commission. They have been approved by their respective boards. Special revenue funds, we really run through the special use of these funds with major streets and local streets. They're pretty self-explanatory. However, they're very specific uses, so the budgets for these really do kind of balance with the revenue coming in and the use that they're being set aside for. We have our enterprise funds, which are a little bit more what people kind of get concerned about, too, with water and sewer, and that's where our water and sewer rates come to, which gets us into maybe not so much fun stuff here. But our water, sewer, and stormwater rate changes. We are following and recommending to continue following the rate study that was done and updated over the past few years and continuing on with that, which allows for the strategic planning of other utility infrastructure replacements or repairs along the lines. There's a lot of information on here. We've kind of been talking about this and have been publishing these rates in here, so hopefully it's not too much of a surprise. But when we're looking at what increases are occurring with water and sewer, we're looking at a water fixed rate increase of 38 cents a month and then estimated, and then a usage rate of increase of 44 cents per gallon, per 1,000 gallons or per one unit, and what that would equate to for a resident when we look at water would be an increase of about $2.214. But if we go back to sewer here, we have an increase of fixed rate of 50 cents a month and an increase of 66 per 1,000 units or 1,000 gallons, one unit. And that equates to a $3.14 increase per month at this point for the average user. And stormwater, there is an increase of 34 cents per month, and that is a monthly rate, and again, it varies based off of your lot size. So, when we look at the total, and again, this also includes our solid waste in there, we are looking at an increase of $5.62 as we kind of average it out for the average user. I can certainly walk through, anybody who wants to walk through their bill, please give us a call or give finance a call, and we can discuss that. Moving right along, we talked about solid waste, which we're going to talk a little bit more about today, too, but I just wanted to kind of touch on the solid waste fee, which ties into our budget to cover our cost. Solid waste covers more than just waste management. That covers curbside, which is a bulk of it, and you see that here, but that also covers those services like rubbish drop-off, spring leaf and brush pickup, fall leaf brush pickup, compost drop-off, that holiday tree drop-off, and a couple of other things that we kind of throw in there when we need to. Very small amount. So, it covers more than just that, and I think that's important to note as we kind of move forward with some of these services and continue to provide these stellar services. Now, I rambled quite a bit on this, and I do apologize for running through that, but that's the budget in a nutshell, and I'm happy to do a song and dance for that at any time, so, please.
Thank you, City Manager. With that, I will open up the public hearing. Those of you wishing to comment on the public hearing have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address when doing so. Do I have anyone to comment on this public hearing? Do I have anyone for comment on this public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Ottoe.
I move to approve the attached resolution adopting the fiscal year 2026 Budget and General Appropriations Act.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner Ottoe, any discussion?
Yeah, real quick, this is pretty much the meat and potatoes of what your City Commission does. We go through all of these financial numbers and try to make it kind of meet, the numbers aren't there anymore, but try to meet the revenues, meet the expenditures. None of that's possible without the staff that is here, though. Ultimately, the City Commission is really just the oversight of everything that's happening. So, huge thank you to Karen, our City Manager, as well as all of our financial staff that put in the time and effort to really make this an easy process for us. And not only easy, but since I've been paying attention to City Commission stuff for, well, it's been a number of years now, I think it was the most informative the process has been and most educational, and I really look forward to seeing how that continues to evolve. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Yes. I will repeat everything that Commissioner Ottoe said about the staff. I mean, we really are fortunate to have the administration that we have right now. I've been on the Commission for a little over five years, and I keep waiting for that time where we can spend more money, but we haven't been able to. And, you know, our City Manager came in at a time when we were starting to recognize how difficult our budget was, and we've done a lot of cutting, we've done a lot of innovative things. I think this is the first time we're going to fix the streets in three years, I think. But, and anyway, I'm really glad that we are able to, this year, take $1.4 million out of our fund balance and fix some of the streets. And if, I hope you're all hearing that, we are paying off our debt so that we can be financially in a better position in future years. So, thank you for that. We are also trying to find other revenues for income, and that's difficult, as she was talking about with the one graph that she showed about what other states do and what we can't do. So, it's been a struggle, and it's been really a pleasure to work with the administration that we have, and we are really heading in the right direction and turning that big boat around in the lake to go in the right direction. So, thank you to the administration.
Thank you. Any other commissioners with comment? Okay. With that, I will say that I also want to thank the staff, all of the hard work that you put in, making sure to explain every question that any of these commissioners and myself had about what was going on with the budget was more than helpful. I enjoy all of the massive amount of paperwork we get on it because I feel like it is our job to be completely informed on everything we are voting on. And I can say with certainty, I'm very informed on it, and I'm very confident in this budget, which makes me happy going forward. With that, Deputy City Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottoe?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. This brings us to our second of our public hearings of the evening. The former Marquette General Hospital Brownfield Plan Amendment. Deputy City Clerk, can I have the background, please?
A Brownfield plan for the former Marquette General Hospital, MGH, redevelopment was approved by the City of Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, MBRA, on May 19, 2022, and by the Marquette City Commission on May 31, 2022, with a primary focus on abatement and demolition, infrastructure improvements, and site preparation. Abatement and demolition costs have been covered by the funding from the state and federal governments through an $8 million Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, an $8 million Legislative Blight Elimination Allocation. Since the approval of the original Brownfield Plan, Veridia Group has acquired the property from the NMU Foundation and has been working to prepare specific plans for the redevelopment that provides for multiple uses and appropriate residential density. In order to provide the desired density and investment, there is a critical need for integrated parking rather than surface parking. However, the cost for developing integrated parking is extensive and threatens the financial viability of the development without Brownfield TIF support. As a result, Veridia is requesting a revision to the Brownfield Plan Eligible Activity Budget to shift from abatement and demolition to integrated parking. The requested costs for integrated parking are anticipated to be at least $5 million lower than the original total Brownfield Plan budget. A Brownfield Plan Amendment is recommended to accommodate the shift. A Brownfield Plan Amendment must be approved by the same process as a Brownfield Plan, including MBRA approval, notice to taxing jurisdictions, a public hearing, and commission approval. A significant source of discussion at the City Commission Work Session covering the amendment was a total length of capture. Following the indication of the Commission, the City Manager has negotiated a modification of the TIF capture period for private expenses to 15 years following the approval of this amendment. This will be stipulated in a forthcoming development agreement that is required for the final execution of this plan. The Brownfield Plan Amendment was originally approved by the MBRA at their September 17, 2025 meeting, but will require reapproval as a result of modifications made in the interim period. The public hearing for consideration of the Brownfield Plan Amendment was scheduled at the September 8, 2025 City Commission meeting. Fiscal effect, the city would continue to collect the base level of taxes on the parcels under this plan and will be able to seek reimbursement for the eligible public infrastructure expenses with the full execution of the proposed development. The city will see a significant increase in property tax revenue after the completion of the capture period. Recommendation, adopt the resolution approving the former Marquette General Hospital redevelopment Brownfield Plan Amendment and direct the City Manager to prepare a development agreement that includes a 15-year period for private TIF reimbursements for review at a subsequent meeting. Alternatives as determined by the Commission. under this plan and will be able to seek reimbursement for the eligible public infrastructure expenses with the full execution of the proposed development. The city will see a significant increase in property tax revenue after the completion of the capture period. Recommendation, adopt the resolution approving the former Marquette General Hospital redevelopment brownfield plan amendment and direct the city manager to prepare a development agreement that includes a 15-year period for private TIF reimbursements for review at a subsequent meeting. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing for this. Anyone wishing to comment on this public hearing has three minutes to do so. Do I have any, or please state your name and physical address when speaking. Do I have anyone who would like to comment on the public hearing? Do I have anyone?
Hi, I'm Al Nick.
Okay.
My name is Mark before. I'm with the Veridia Group, and I want to thank the commission, city commission, for considering our request. I also thank the brownfield for approving our amendment. We, as was noted, we now own the 17-acre campus and will be investing roughly $200 million into the site, a significant portion of which will be residential development, a senior living component, which I want to chat with Marina at some point here to discuss some opportunities that we might jointly benefit from. I also wanted to note that we, in our development, will be including a significant park development. Roughly, we're estimating right now about $2 million, and that will be a community park. And we're excited to move forward. Our first phase of our development will be townhomes on the parking lot south of Magnetic Street, and then we'll be, right now, our plan is to develop the senior living facility after that. Beyond that, that's kind of where we're at with the development, and we'll look at multifamily development and mixed-use facilities down the road.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is, if there's any questions that I can answer.
We're not allowed to do that right now, sorry.
All right, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else who would like to comment on the public hearing? Seeing no one else, this public hearing is closed. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I move to adopt the resolution approving the former Marquette General Hospital redevelopment brownfield plan amendment and direct the city manager to prepare a development agreement that includes a 15-year period for private TIF reimbursements for review at a subsequent meeting.
A second? Protem Schlegel?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Gottlieb, any comment?
Yes, the city commission has listened hard and worked hard with the developers and the city administration with regards to this amendment, and I think it's a good idea. I wholeheartedly endorse it. I think it'll be good for the city in the long run.
Protem Schlegel?
Yeah, I guess I would echo the sentiment there. I think that the, to get away from the surface, parking is a great option that I'm glad is being thought of now versus wishing it would have been considered down the line. And I think it's a great way to utilize the brownfield plan. With that being said, I support it full-heartedly.
Any other commissioners? I do want to point out that I like this specifically because it doubles the investment on the property by switching those funds, and it doesn't extend the length of the brownfield that we had at all. So we get a significantly higher taxable value in the end for the same amount of time. So I think that this, to me, was a no-brainer in allowing for this to happen and allowing for a much larger build-out on the top of the property. And I really think the people at Veridia for looking into it, try and find a way to help us. Any way we can increase our taxable value is something that I want to do. So with that, deputy city clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottoe?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. This brings us to our last public hearing of the evening, the rezoning of 480 River Park Circle. Deputy City Clerk, can I have the background, please?
The right to develop the Shop House Park, PUD, at 480 River Park Circle has expired due to the failure to submit final site plans within the time period granted to begin development under Section 54.323i6 of the Land Development Code, LDC. Thus, the property must be rezoned to its previous classification or another classification recommended by the Community Master Plan, CMP, per the same section of the LDC. Staff recommends that the property be rezoned to the previous zoning district, Industrial Manufacturing, IM, which is supported by the CMP, although there is no specific recommendations for this property in the CMP. The Planning Commission reviewed the materials at their September 16, 2025 meeting and made the following motion. It was moved by D. Fetter, seconded by J. Fitkin, and carried five to zero, that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report for 02-REZ-09-25, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Community Master Plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the city commission approve 02-REZ-09-25 as presented. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, adopt ordinance 25-12 to rezone the property at 480 River Park Circle to Industrial Manufacturing. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing. Members of the public who wish to comment on this public hearing have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address. Do I have anyone wishing to comment on this public hearing? Anyone? Seeing none, this public hearing is closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Larson?
I move that we adopt ordinance 25-12 to rezone the property at 480 River Park Circle to Industrial Manufacturing.
And a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Just the PUD has expired, and this is mostly a housekeeping matter to revert it back to industrial manufacturing.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I think it's a pretty logical and simple thing. The owner had some plans and a timeline. The final site plans were not submitted, so it just naturally goes back to the original rezoning, so.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
I was on the Planning Commission when this first came up, and I was really excited by the Shop House Park, and I find it unfortunate that it didn't happen, and I kind of hope he brings it back to us one day and tries again.
Any other comments? Seeing none, deputy city clerk, can you please conduct another roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottoe?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. This brings us to item number seven, our consent agenda. Commissioners, do I have a motion on consent? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I move to accept the consent agenda, as written.
And a second? Commissioner Ottoe?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes. Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six to zero. This brings us to new business for the evening. Up first, we have our solid waste collection parking resolution. Deputy City Clerk, can I have the background, please? Are you getting sick of me yet? No, I love hearing you talk.
In January, the city commission approved an amendment and extension to the city contract with the waste management for curbside residential collection services. This amendment included the transition to a fully-carded collection system and provided for the curbside collection of materials to take place during the day. Section two of the agreement states that the city will prohibit on-street parking in each respective collection zone during the corresponding collection period to accommodate fully-carded and automated collection. In May, the commission adopted ordinance 25-06, creating a framework under which the city may implement on-street parking restrictions to facilitate curbside collection during the daytime hours. The ordinance establishes a system wherein the city commission may adopt a resolution restricting street parking in areas and during times impacted by scheduled solid waste collection. The attached resolution establishes the required parking restrictions. Additional information about curbside collection for city garbage and recycling, including schedules and maps, can be found on the city's website at www.marquettemi.gov/curbsidepickup. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve the parking resolution implementing parking restrictions associated with curbside residential collection services. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Any of you? Commissioner Larson?
I move that we approve the parking resolution implementing parking restrictions associated with curbside residential collection services.
And a second? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I'll second that.
Any discussion, Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, so this isn't, this isn't something that I think the city, we could take lightly in trying to figure out how to make this happen. I think our city manager pointed out, you know, during our budget session, the costs that were associated with increasing services, you know, this year was only up to, you know, $5, you know, per, but I think there was some numbers that were crunched that if we did not, if we weren't able to move off, move vehicles off road, off-street during those parking collection times, that it was going to be a much higher cost. And I don't know if you just want, if you could say something a little bit about that, you know, prior to us making that decision.
That was, that was a guess, right, Mayor? Okay, sorry. Yeah, so one of the, so there's a couple of reasons why we had to move in that direction with parking restrictions. There is an agreement through the contract with waste management to do so, which was part of keeping that cost lower, and the cost would have increased significantly and would have cost residents approximately $70 more a year if we had that, the cars on the street, again, because of timing, scheduling, and whatnot. And then obviously, there's more of the safety component, too, and then the service reliability, which plays a part as well. So happy to touch more on that with some other points, but hopefully that answers your question.
The whole parking issue came up, it was actually one of the first controversial issues that came up to the city commission when, right after I was elected, so I kind of remember it very well. I took a stand on it at that point. I was initially opposed to the agreement, in part because of the parking. However, there literally was no other choice. I think the city administration did what they could, did what they had to do, and we had no other options. It's going to have some hardship, but I think we can work with public safety and city administration to minimize it, and I think the city manager will be talking a bit about that again in a little bit. It's a tough choice, but I don't think we had any choice at all.
Commissioner Davis?
This is, I've had, I've spent a lot of time looking at this. I've talked to several residents, I drove around the neighborhood and checked out, you know, people said that they have their RVs in their driveway, and they've got two cars, and there's no place else to put them. I drove around, I saw boats, and I saw recreational vehicles, and, you know, we're kind of a recreational kind of a city, so I, you know, I don't want to discourage any of that. So this is a difficult adjustment for our community to make. There are a lot of things that I learned today. What are we going to do about visitors, about contractors, about, you know, can, if people truly don't have any space, can they park on their lawns? Can they get an exception? I, you know, I know the city manager has a lot to say about this, and I'm wondering if this is a good time, or should I go through those things? I mean, there's, there's some really good reasons that this has to pass. So is it okay if our city manager talks?
Certainly. There's, there are a number of questions that have come through here, but really, when we talk about, I think you touched on it with exceptions, this is going to follow the procedures and the, I guess, process similar to our winter parking ban. And this is going to be only one day of those, of the week, though, and it does extend a little bit further. So there's going to be some exceptions here, and we already have a process in place to handle special accommodations for cart retrieval, so that is if there are some, some mobility concerns or issues where retrieving your cart and getting your cart out to the end of the driveway is not possible, and so waste management does have that agreement, and so we would be looking at something, you know, maybe similar with those households if we need to have different accommodations for parking as well that isn't so, so far if there's a need for that. There's also a list of properties that we have and have specific permission or permits to park on the lawn or right-of-way during that winter parking ban. And again, that might be the place that we're really looking at starting and having consideration. But again, this isn't every day, all day necessarily, but it is one day a week in addition to that winter parking ban, which is coming as well, in a month, as well. Sorry. I can talk more if you like.
Oh, you've got more?
Well, I would say, if there's, if there's other questions on that, where do they start on some of these questions? So if you do have an accommodation, we are directing you to call that Public Works number. Now, I am going to, you know, kind of preface that, though, with, if you are one of those individuals that are on that, that list for special accommodation or parking permits, yes, call, but if you're not, maybe just let's see how we can work through some of these, these concerns, unless it's an immediate need. There are permits that are issued for using the right-of-way for dumpsters such as construction projects, those, we are going to be adding some information on that, on those permits as well.
Okay. Well, let's start with how do people request exceptions?
So contact Public Works. There is a form, actually, we have online as well, which is probably your best bet at this point. Use the, there's a, there's a number of things to select from. Use the other line right now for requesting one of those. But again, they're going to be very specific instances, and we will be reaching out to discuss those, but it might take some time. But I'm going to make it a little bit clear here that extra vehicles that aren't, aren't necessarily going to be the reason for everybody to have an exception. So we do have to kind of draw a line on how we implement that, and using the extreme circumstances at this point is probably what we're going to be looking at first.
Okay, you know, I'm just going to run through some of the things
Yeah, please.
that I've been talking to people about today. You know, I, one of the things is that I know that our, our city will be, you know, ongoing evaluations for this and will be working with waste management. I also talked to waste management today, and, and they're very much in favor of working, you know, looking at the evaluations and working with the city to make sure there's some accommodations. One of the questions I get is, why would we not move to one side, have parking on one side of the street?
That was considered. That was absolutely considered, and that was probably one of our first choices, except for, are you going to fight with your neighbor on which side you're on? And where are they still going to be putting those carts? So if we do have parking on one side of the, the road, the carts are still going to be obstructed, potentially on the side of the road with the parking, but then also we may be creating an unfair or, you know, an undue burden as well for one side of the road versus the other. So that also didn't fix the problem of needing to be able to access those carts safely as well.
Commissioner Davis, one other consideration on that is, you know, with the adoption of carts and really with bags in general, I think we heard a lot of feedback from our senior citizens talking about, you know, how it could be difficult to move those carts. It seemed like moving those across the street and retrieving them would just add a further burden to that process as well.
Okay. Tell me about the businesses and schools in that area. For instance, if I'm a parent, I want to drop off my preschooler at, say, Sandy Knoll, and it happens to be the, the day that, that the restrictions are on, and I can't park on the street because of, you know, school lots are full.
So that's excellent question. Sandy Knoll specifically actually is included in the exception for one of the subzones that the restriction is lifted at 7:00 a.m. So we've looked at the schools within the city limits that would be impacted, and there's one, maybe two, that will have to be adjusted and may even need to be adjusted as, for that entire timeframe because of the schedule for drop-off on one of those schools. I'm not going to say that just yet, which one, but those are included in subzones. So businesses also that need to have access or parking for their business hours will be in a subzone that the restriction is lifted at 7:00 a.m.
Okay, I communicated with a couple residents today and said, well, how is it going right now? Are you having any problems getting your garbage picked up, your recycles picked up? And they said, no, it's all just fine. And that is because waste management is spending more time doing it and working around those accommodations. And as was pointed out earlier, the reduced rate assumes that they would be able to do it at a faster rate because of the parking restrictions.
It's currently taking 12 hours due to those cars in the way, and they have to have extra staffing for that as well, but it is taking 12 hours. It is expected to take eight hours. It is expected to take eight hours once those cars are gone or the obstructions are gone. And that would also allow them to be on a more consistent schedule. So you might be able to start predicting that a little bit more if all other factors are held.
So what I heard you say one other time is that if you know your schedule pickup and it is completed for the day, it's okay to park on the road?
So, yes, I think it is very safe to say that if you end up being in, if you're in an area that is picked up by 10:00 a.m. and your entire street is picked up recycling and solid waste, then yes, you can park in the street. It's going to be very difficult to monitor that. It's gonna be very difficult to kind of lay that out consistently, but there's no reason to put that burden on if the garbage is collected or the rubbish is collected at that time.
Okay, I think I have one more that came up. What are we gonna do about, if someone decides to have a birthday party at noon or a book club at noon and it happens to be that day, and so their driveway doesn't accommodate all the cars that are coming? So not only those kind of visitor kind of exceptions, but also what kind of fee would there be for, you know, not parking where you're not supposed to be parking?
First of all, am I invited? Second of all, yes, there is an exception for those kinds of events. We are aware that whether it's construction or specific events, we will have some of those exceptions that you will need to reach out to Public Works line and let us know and discuss that with us so that we can help either frame the wording or try to keep a better eye on it. But there will be an exception. I don't, I hope that the party favors are not including tickets on the car.
I was gonna say. So if I have a party and I want it on that day, do I have to call the city?
Yes, I would. I would call the city. You cannot and see what happens, but that's not, but there's also rubbish and garbage that would need to be picked up on the house, you know, on that block. But call us and let us work, let us help you work through those.
I think the bottom line is this is something that is not going to be fun to adjust to, but our community needs to adjust to it, and we will. We adjusted to winter parking bans, and it will work out in the end. And any issues that aren't being worked out will be looked at by the city and considered. So that's all I have. Is that enough questions?
You did a very good job of explaining a lot of things. Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, real quick, just a question for the city manager. If we were to vote no on this, would that be an issue contractually, since we've already agreed with the terms of the contract to pass this?
Yes, and I'm actually gonna allow the city attorney to comment on that one if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
So, yes, because that is a specific term of that contract, we would be in breach of our contract with Waste Management. I mean, I would strongly suggest we don't want to do that because that creates a whole host of issues, legal issues for us.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Just one quick comment, too. You know, obviously, this is something we've all had people reach out to us on. Change is really difficult, and I will tell you that, you know, a lot of times, we are last to the party when it comes to changes, especially in types of communities. If you have friends that live in bigger cities, especially cities further south, not necessarily dealing with the winter, parking implementations like this are already very normal. So not to say that it's something that's convenient for us, because it's not. Believe me, it's not convenient for me to have to make the sacrifice to figure out how to shift my vehicles around, and, you know, understanding my neighbors have the same issue is a difficult thing. But it's one of those things that's a necessity to make sure our costs stay low. And I think that that's the really important factor here. When we negotiated the contract with Waste Management, we did so in trusting that we were gonna make this change to keep the costs low for the residents of the city. So that's the important part we needed to plan out. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've talked about a lot of input from social media, and I just, I think I've, maybe I have a little bit too much faith in our community and our people here and our ability to accept and work around some change. I think that Commissioner Davis asked, two of the questions that were on my list of, you know, if they go through and you're already picked up, can you, is it okay to park out on the street? Absolutely. And it's a new routine, okay? It's a new dance for us. We're gonna have to get through it a few times in order to figure out what time we can expect our service to come through and then, and work around, work around that, you know, very respectfully, especially with your neighbors and everything else throughout the community. I really, I understand that we're going and we're asking for probably the biggest amount of change, but this isn't something that staff is just gonna let sit and fester through, you know, year after year, month after month even. If there's best practices that we can observe from this being implemented, then I think it's gonna be time to make some changes in respect to that. And I have full confidence in our city staff to be able to recognize that, hey, we can make some changes now that we've gone through and we've seen how this process has changed our day of pickup, and we're gonna ease it or we're gonna make some changes that are going to make most sense to our community and make it easier on our residents. So I think we just gotta give it a try and be respectful of the efforts that are being put out there to keep our rates as low as they can be and accept that, you know, there's always gonna be some sort of change out there. So I appreciate everybody's patience in this process, and I look forward to this, the first time that we start to really go back and revisit and see how this has changed our landscape. So thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Go ahead.
I'm not done, apparently. Some of the concerns I heard is it's confusing and how are we going to know? So I'm assuming that we will have some sort of a educational campaign, and so once I know that my garbage night is Wednesday and I can put it out at this time and I see that they're done, I can bring it back in. Tell me about how we're going to let people know, because the information here was kind of confusing.
Certainly. And yes, we will be including information into our utility bills. We will be hitting it pretty hard on our social media, sending out PSAs, and then once this is really kind of kicking off and we're having to go out and remind people, there will be some actual commitment from a department head for going out there and making sure that we are notifying any vehicles that are out in that area. So there will be a long lead time to making sure that we are making people aware. There is a map on our city website, on our Public Works website, specifically around the garbage and recycling, some page there that you can click and type in your address and see what zone you're in, what day your garbage will be collected, and when you can't park on the street. So I can't write off necessarily the whole address, but I can certainly guide people to that.
You know, I just think that one of the most difficult ones is that there's the visitors that are unintentionally there. I mean, even if I think about, I'm gonna go to my daughter's house, she can't park in the garage, there's her camper and her two vehicles in the driveway, and I park on the side of the road, oh, whoops, it's garbage night or garbage day. It's gonna be the, you know, the unexpected visitors that are there or some of those things that just happen on a regular basis, so.
That is, I do not anticipate the people that are putting their garbage out to be parking on the street. It will be those that are not aware. And in order to preserve the beautiful landscape that we do have and many of the views that we have, we are really trying to limit those signs and getting those on there. So we will be looking at creative solutions such as placing a sticker onto the garbage cart as well that says, if you see this, don't park here on this day. So we're working on some creative ideas for that as well.
Any other comments from the commission? I really don't think I have anything that I can add. That was very well done, a great discussion. The only thing that I would like to point out is, I really want to stress the fact that as soon as this happens, it's not gonna just be tickets for everyone immediately. It's going to be warnings. It's going to be a, working together to make sure. It's not just gonna be the chief of police wandering around with a ticket notebook right away. So don't stress too much as we learn and get on this curve to get used to the changes that are coming. With that, city clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. This brings us to the City of Marquette Fiscal Years 2026 to 2028 Strategic Plan. City clerk, can you give me the background, please?
The City Commission convened two work sessions on July 11th and August 11th, 2025, to give input, review, recommendations from staff, and provide guidance for drafting the City of Marquette Strategic Plan for Fiscal Years 2026 to 28. The result was the attached draft strategic plan, which is being presented for consideration by the City Commission. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve the City of Marquette Strategic Plan for Fiscal Years 2026 to 28 and adopt the strategic plan resolution as presented. Alternatives is determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move to approve the City of Marquette Strategic Plan for Fiscal Years 2026 through 28 and adopt a strategic plan resolution as presented.
Thank you. A second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you to the administration because this was a strategic planning process that was a little different than what we've experienced in the past, and it was a really nice strategic planning process, and I appreciate the work that went into it.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes, thank you again to the staff, you know, for helping put this together. It really sets forth the next three years in helping to kind of set out our priorities, and I certainly look forward to continuing to work with the commission and staff on those.
Any other comments?
I would just like to comment, a special thank you to Annie specifically. This is beautifully laid out and wonderful, and I know you did a lot of work on it. Not that everyone in the staff didn't, but I really enjoyed the format it was presented to us in this time, so thank you for that. With that, city clerk, or deputy city clerk, may I have another roll call, please?
Last one. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley.
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. This brings us to item number 10, our city attorney evaluation. City clerk, can you please read the background?
The city charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city attorney. In July, the City Commission authorized the mayor to appoint a subcommittee to perform this evaluation and make recommendations for changes to the contract. The mayor subsequently appointed Commissioner Otte, Mayor Protem Schlegel, and Mayor Hanley to the evaluation subcommittee. The subcommittee met earlier this month, and the overall evaluation was very positive. The city attorney has successfully met all the city charter requirements for her position and has met with a representative of the subcommittee to discuss feedback on the review. Following the review, the subcommittee has recommended extending the terms of the contract by one year to September 30th, 2028, and increasing the salary 5%. Fiscal effect, the city attorney's salary will be increased by 5%. Recommendation, approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation and amend the contract to reflect a 5% salary increase and term extension to September 30th, 2028. Alternatives is determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Otte?
I move to approve the city attorney's annual performance evaluation and amend the contract to reflect a 5% salary increase and term extension to September 30th, 2028.
Protem Schlegel?
I second the motion.
Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, huge thank you to Suzanne. Obviously, the public doesn't get to be as forward-facing to the City Commission's other employee, as I often refer to you as, but Suzanne is a huge resource for all of us. She's always available anytime we have any legal question on any document we're reading. You know, ultimately, she does a lot of things behind the scenes that I think are very important in the community, answering questions for departments, really negotiating contracts, doing things of that manner. So, you know, a special thank you here to the deputy city manager, Sean Hobbins, who really put together a lot of information to try to help determine what was the fair salary increase here and gathered contracts from across the state and really of equal parts. So a lot of work goes in behind the scenes that the public just isn't aware of here, and we have a really great team. And I think that just this whole process reflects that. So thank you to Suzanne big time, and thank you to the whole team.
Thank you. First time I served on the commission, we did not have in-house counsel. And I didn't, you know, I didn't think very much of it until being on the commission now and getting the bi-monthly reports that we get, I just didn't realize how much work went into that side of our polity. And I'm just really, I think we're fortunate to have Suzanne do the job that she's been doing for us and really endorse this recommendation and feel that it's well-deserved. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yeah, I'd really like to thank the three of you who did this. It's a tough task to evaluate somebody else that you have to sit next to and then say it out loud. And so thank you to you three for doing it.
Any other comments? With that, I will bring it to, should I make you do another roll call just for fun? Okay. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six to zero. Finally, on our new business, we have the city manager evaluation. Deputy city clerk, can you please read the background one more time?
The city charter requires an annual performance evaluation of the city manager. In July, the City Commission authorized the mayor to appoint a subcommittee to perform this evaluation and make recommendations for changes to the contract. The mayor subsequently appointed Commissioner Otte, Mayor Protem Schlegel, and Mayor Hanley to the evaluation subcommittee. The subcommittee met earlier this month, and the overall evaluation was very positive. The manager has successfully met all of the city charter requirements for her position, and the majority of the city commissioners awarded her the highest rating in all other performance categories. The manager has met with a representative of the subcommittee to discuss feedback on the review. The subcommittee has recommended extending the terms of the contract by one year to September 30th, 2028, and increasing the salary 5%. Additionally, the committee recommends increasing the length of the city manager's severance terms from a base of six months to up to 12 months with commensurate service credit if terminated without cause. Fiscal effect, the city manager's salary will be increased by 5%. Recommendation, approve the city manager's annual performance evaluation and amend the contract to reflect a 5% salary increase, term extension to September 30th, 2028, and a modified severance clause. Alternatives is determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Protem Schlegel?
I would make the motion to approve the city manager's annual performance evaluation and amend the contract to reflect a 5% salary increase, term extension to September 30th, 2028, and a modified severance clause.
Second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Protem Schlegel?
Yeah. You know, I think the results are things that we speak about almost every meeting, you know, the positive changes that we've made, the directions that we've taken as a community, as a fiscally respectful city process. And I just really think that a lot of it, if not all of it, is because of Karen's leadership. And I will say that there are certainly small areas of critique, I think, that we may have brought up, but nothing that was major. And I think that Karen did a very nice job being humble and accepting those types of suggestions that would be, only improve her performance in the future. So I just, I really, I think that this is a well-deserved increase.
Commissioner Otte?
Yeah. Karen, thank you for your dedication to this city. I think the City of Marquette, its residents, the people who work for the community, they all should be very thankful to have you as the city manager. Not only your dedication to what you do, but your dedication to the community is so, it's inspiring. Honestly, I know you really care when people write things on social media. You try to follow up with them, which is impressive in itself. But knowing what you do outside of just your day-to-day, the ways you're involved in other things that are just extracurriculars, as far as at the state level with MML and, you know, being just such a pillar of this area, we are very lucky to have you. I know I joke with you every year about the plaques on the wall in the city manager's office that state that basically, well, shows most of the time, city manager office that, that state that basically, well, shows, most of the time, City Managers last about two to three years around here. I've had a joke with Karen that she'll never make it five, but every year, we get closer to that five, don't we, Karen? So you're doing awesome, and thank you once again for your dedication.
Other Commissioners? I would like to say to both Karen and to Suzanne, we are very lucky to have you as employees. When it comes to what Suzanne does, it's not something that we necessarily have a lot of contact with unless we have a question or whatnot, but she does a very good job of keeping us apprised every, every month of what she's doing, even if it's above our heads or something we don't need to know. She's very good at that. Whereas with Karen, we do have a lot more day-to-day contact. So we do have, we had a much higher rubric for how to, how to grade that, which was a little bit better. But it was nice to have all of the Commission really agree on the majority of, of those things. So it was, it was good to have, and it's also good feedback for her as a City Manager to know where we really love, what we really love, and what we think could maybe we worked on. But it's the best for everyone to have goals to get, move forward. You don't wanna just sit back and ride it out for your, apparently, last year, according to Commissioner Ottehway. Please don't leave. But other than that, Commissioners, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six to zero. This brings us to our last public comment of the evening. As a reminder, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when approaching the Commission. Do I have anyone for public comment? Anyone for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed, which will bring us to comments from the Commission. I'm gonna start today with Protem Schlegel.
Thank you. I really don't have much to say tonight. Maybe it's my allergies that are kicking in, I don't know. But I do wanna kinda go back and just circle back on my comments when Mo was giving her presentation afterwards. We were, we were very fortunate that the city allows us to go down to the Michigan Municipal League, and they put on a really great show showcasing everything from, you know, what's, what's best practices in communities, what's topics of interest that we need to be paying attention to, you know, what, you know, what, what opportunities are there for us to get further involved or lead our community into the proper directions? And I just think that, that the, when, when we're down there and we literally have people come up and they say, boy, you know, I, I worked with your group up in Marquette and they did a crowdfunding project for the playground or the skate park or something along those lines, one of those different events, and you're like, yeah, yeah, that was great. And they're like, boy, you guys really knocked it out of the park. And I said, you know, that's, that's a little bit of what we have to do, but really, it's the community, it's the, it's the residents that take on those responsibilities and drive that bus, and then we somehow get credit for it. But, you know, the fact is, is that I'm fortunate to be able to go down to those events, and I want you to know that when we come back, we come back full of great ideas and full of energy to try and, you know, lead us in the right direction. And, and that's just one example of many that, that just makes me proud to call Marquette home. So, thank you.
Commissioner Ottehway?
Yeah, a few things. We had a, I think we all had a few people, at least a few people, reach out to us regarding various topics this week. Thank you for that. Keep reaching out, keep putting in your input, especially those of you that, that don't wanna come to the meeting. Reaching out via email is just an easy way to make sure somebody sees it. And believe me, I take all of that stuff seriously. I read all of those emails. Don't respond to all of them, because a lot of times, we're all emailed, and I just, I try to not respond to duplicate emails, but especially when we get a lot of them. But that's neither here nor there, doesn't mean it's not being read, and like I said, your voice is being heard, and hopefully, with some of the comments we made tonight, that's being reflected. Getting on to, you know, the garbage and waste management kind of collection issues that we've had, one of the things that I am hopeful of, especially with the, the partnership that we have with them, is that by, by our residents making the commitment here and, you know, essentially having a winter parking ban during days that garbage is being picked up, ultimately, I'm hoping that that translates to better garbage pickup. I know we've had some issues here recently, going back to the past few months with, with our waste management pickup. I'm hoping a lot of that is cured shortly here with, with this. And I think, you know, as we, as we say, try to be good neighbors to, to people that you live by and people in your community, maybe do your best to give them a chance at this. And, you know, hopefully, we can establish a good partnership with them in the future, because really, we don't have many options out there, and I think that that is very important for people to know. Lastly, on the brownfield that was passed earlier, Barb made some good comments, came up earlier, and one of the things that was really discussed was the College Avenue magnetic area issues. We've, we've had a lot of comments and discussion about a lot of the traffic issues there. I know that that traffic study is probably in the midst or wrapping up or getting there soon. I'll be very excited to see what comes of that. I think a lot of people will. And I think one of the things that is very important to know that there will be a lot more discussions with that area as we move on. So please, keep bringing your input. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
We've had a lot of good news stuff when we started out this meeting, and I really had a fun time with that. And we learned about our senior services and all the wonderful things that they're doing and how it would, probably will be growing in the future. And then there's Barb Sisorni, who certainly deserves her recognition. I was talking to her before the meeting, and she does even more than what she was recognized for. And then we got the Best Tasting Water in Michigan Award, which is really cool. I even think of our, as our budget, as good news because it's balanced and it's, it's solid, and we're getting to do some things with our streets this year. And our brownfield plan amendment, I do feel, is, is good news in a lot of ways. And Barb Ozide, I really do appreciate your comments because I think that you represent a lot of people that are out there in the community who have questions for that. But if we, you know, if we look at that, it, the, the plan as it's amended will provide more housing, which will provide more property taxes that we can operate from. They will also be a public good with the park. And you, we're concerned about accountability, and that comes in our contract with them. You know, brownfields often can go up to 30 years. We are going to hold them to 15 years, and even that is good news. And maybe we can even reduce it from there. And College Avenue, you were concerned about, and College Avenue is a mess right now, and it does create some diversion for the traffic, but we have a traffic study going on. Will we close College Avenue? I don't know. But if you don't want to, make sure that we know that. Make sure that Veridia knows that. But I'm, I have some hope for, for that traffic study to help us through that process. So I really do feel that that even is a good news. The public art, the freedom monuments that were going to be provided at the Harlow Park is, is, I think is gonna be a really, is it Harlow Park? Yeah. Is, is it gonna be a really nice addition to that area and, and help us to, remind us of the, you know, what, what our country is based on. And, you know, we've got a really good city attorney and city, city manager that I think are gonna stand here. We've got a strategic plan. So, you know, the only thing I didn't like is a solid waste collection, but I don't like it just as much as all the other people don't like it. But we're gonna get through that, too. So, but thank you, everyone. That's it.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Sadly, I have a few things to say, too. First was a thought, my thoughts go out to Commissioner Mayor and his household, there's a COVID outbreak there, which is why Commissioner Mayor is not here today. Tonight's consent agenda carried a tremendous amount of work behind it, and a lot of decisions were made, and it's unfortunate, we couldn't hear Rachel say each one of them. And we should've pulled them all from consent agenda and, just to hear your voice. But the amount of work in today's consent agenda was amazing and should not be discounted. We can't discuss each item in detail, and I would've liked to discuss some of them. We just can't do it all. And I echo what Commissioner Davis said about Ms. Ozide's comments during public comment. I believe the city's commission's vote to approve the brownfield plan is looking forward, looking towards the future for the city. We need the tax revenues, we need the housing. Yes, there are concerns, and we all know them, and we all have had those same thoughts. But I think the city administration and City Commission are aware of them and will keep an eye on what's going on. So we'd like to thank Commissioner Davis for bringing it up at the last meeting to put the 15-year payback on there. I thought that was an excellent way to deal with this. And last thing I wanna say is, there's a forum tomorrow night that some of us might wanna be at. It's gonna be here, Legal Women Voters Citizens Forum. Six o'clock in this room. Should be fun.
Commissioner Larson?
Covered a lot. However, I will, I will just add that, you know, tonight has been the culmination of a number of things, that a lot of things behind the scenes, a lot of big decisions that have been brought forth, talking about, you know, whether that's budget, brownfield, hospital, plan amendment that goes into that, the strategic plan, and of course, you know, garbage collection. All this doesn't get done in a vacuum, as has been previously stated. And we all can't be experts up here, so big thank you to the staff in helping bring us up to speed on each of these issues, whether that be through work sessions, you know, budgeting sessions, or just, you know, answering, letting us come into the office and ask you questions about a variety of these things. So a lot of action tonight has been the work of, you know, many, many months. So, thank you.
Okay. I have nothing to add after all of that, so I will give it to comments from the City Manager.
Thank you. I, I did just wanna highlight some of the big things that we had heard about tonight, and that includes hearing about private investment that is nearing $200 million in our city. Still by far, one of the largest redevelopment projects within the UP, as the governor, I believe, has even said so. But discussing those and hearing many opinions on that and tackling some of those, those challenges and the opportunities that come with something like that. There was also a fiscally responsible, in my opinion, and I think our opinion as well, budget from the citywide funds totaling $94 million. And then also, we heard something a little bit more lighthearted, like the best tasting water from a water filtration plant that pumps nearly 2 million gallons of water out a day to our residents and to our businesses. So a lot of big things have happened tonight, and I really wanted to just say I appreciate all of the healthy and really productive conversation from day one since I've entered here, but then also as we work through some of these more challenging topics and some of the more exciting topics. But we couldn't get to this place without the city staff that we have and the team and the really close core team that we have here that are putting in the time and the effort and getting creative on things, especially as I look at, at Mo out there, who is taking, you know, a budget and taking some minimal tax revenue and, and grant funding and serving our, our most vulnerable and most probably information-filled and vibrant residents within our community. So lots of great things, and I'm so incredibly proud to be part of it here and to work with all of you for yet another year. So, thank you.
All right. With that, we are adjourned at 7:52 PM.